It is 6 o'clock and the Kerrville City Council is in session. And I'm going to ask our newest council member, Brenda Hughes, to lead us in prayer and then the pledge. Let's stand.
And if you will all join me, please, in a few moments of silence, to acknowledge and recognize those in our community who have passed from COVID, please. Heavenly Father, we come to you this hour, asking for your blessings as we gather here tonight. We pray for guidance over this meeting and ask that you will clearly direct us to conduct the city's business with a spirit of logic and enthusiasm. Give us the desire to find ways to work together and to encourage each other to excellence. Challenge us to reach higher and farther, to be the best we can be for the citizens of Kerrville. We continue to pray for relief for our frontline workers and our first responders during this health crisis and ask for protection for our family and friends, our businesses and our community. Guide us to a better and safer tomorrow. We ask all this in Christ's holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Let me go over some matters of protocol. I want to thank you for attending and being here in the Calo Center where citizens can appear in person. Also want you to know that citizen, our public participation continues to be available by calling in via Zoom, emailing, or using the City Hall Dropbox beforehand. I would also like to mention that if anyone present wants to speak on an agenda item, by now they would have been required to sign up when they came into the building since there are no official public hearings on the agenda. When speakers are called, they are to come to the podium in front of the stage and begin by stating their name and address for the record. Note that public comment periods are for the council to set aside time to specifically hear from you. Any questions that you might have will not be responded to until after public comments have concluded. Thank everyone for in advance for helping to make this a good and solid meeting. Now we come to announcements of community entries. There are no announcements by the staff tonight. Council members, any announcement? All right, okay. Let's move on to the presentations. Presentation tonight is for the Kerrville Kindness Award. And I want to call on the representatives from the Kerrville Police Department and the Blue Santa Program to come up on the stage and then we will read the recognition.
You want your mask?
Yeah.
What?
Mask.
It's up to you.
Okay. All right, I'll tell you what, you will kind of move to the center and obviously face the audience.
Are you afraid of this?
No, no.
Uh-uh.
Okay, in a minute, I'm going to ask you to give me your name. I'm not going to pass the mic because in the City Council meeting in Mason, they all got COVID passing the mic from one to the other. So I'm not going to do that, but I'll repeat the names. The Kerrville Police Department's Blue Santa Program is the Kerrville Kindness Award. Each year, the Kerrville Police Department's Blue Santa Program provides a holiday meal for needy families, as well as clothing for their children, and a Christmas gift for each child ages 13 and under. This is only possible because the goodwill and big hearts of Kerrville citizens, businesses, and civic groups that support Blue Santa every year. The December 2020 Blue Santa collection resulted in 71 area families and more than 300 children enjoying a merry Christmas season. The Kerrville Kindness Program offers a sincere thank you to all who organized and participated in another successful Blue Santa. So, starting over here, if you will give me your name, and are all of you a part of the academy?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Alumni Association.
The Alumni Association of the Kerrville Police Academy. Well, let me ask you this. Do you recommend the Police Academy to others?
Yes.
All right, okay. All right, your name? Right here.
Brenda Smith.
Brenda Smith, all right, okay.
Dr. William Bergen.
Dr. William Bergen.
Jeff Smith.
Hey, Jeff Smith.
Amy McNabb.
McNabb, okay.
Tom Lichen.
And Tom, all right, Tom.
Lichen.
Okay, Lichen. All right, great, great. Good, thank you so much. And to whom should I give this, leave this award?
Brenda Smith.
Brenda, all right. Okay, all right, let's see. Let's kind of do a semicircle.
Rose needs to be in the picture too. Rose, you need to be in the picture also.
Yeah, yeah.
Wave at the cameras.
Got it? All right, okay.
Our Kerrville County Patrol Department, citizens, employees, thank you all for the dedication.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
At this time, we are going to have a report on the Kerr County Alumni Services by Karen Guerrero.
Actually, Mayor, we have the recognition of the board members for their service.
All right, okay.
To be.
Yes, thank you, thank you. I'm going to back up just a minute. We have board members that we are recognizing tonight. I think we only have a couple. These are retiring board members, but Garrett and we have another?
Right here, right here, Mayor.
All right, yeah, okay, all right. And Robert Ogle, if you'll come up here. Yeah, same spot, thank you, thank you. Let me say that the city of Kerrville has over 100 citizens who serve on boards and committees and commissions. And I will tell you, as a city council member, their work makes an incredible difference. I always feel good when we are voting on a proposal or ordinance that I know one of these committees or boards has gone over and has voted favorably for. Let me read Garrett Harmon's commendation representing the group. Whereas Garrett Harmon and Robert Ogle have served as members of the, well, I can't personalize it that much right now because of where you served. I'll just use Garrett. Garrett Harmon has served as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the date of the service beginning June 25, 2013. And whereas Garrett Harmon has served faithfully and dutifully on said board, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas. Garrett Harmon be recognized for outstanding service as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and that on behalf of the citizens of Kerrville, as well as for ourselves individually, we wish to express our sincere appreciation for contributions to the city and the community. Robert Ogle has served as a member of the Senior Services Advisory Board, the date of service beginning January 8, 2019. And whereas Robert Ogle has served faithfully and dutifully on said board, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas. Robert Ogle be recognized for outstanding service as a member of the Senior Services Advisory Board, and that on behalf of the citizens of Kerrville, as well as for ourselves individually, we wish to express our sincere appreciation for contributions to the city and the community. Thank you. All right, thank both of you. Yeah, you have made a difference. And I think we're going to get a picture here. All right, good, thank you, thank you. All right, now, we will hear the report from Kerr County Animal Services. Karen Guerrero.
Good evening. Waiting for my slide to get up. My name is Karen Guerrero. I am the president of Kerrville Pets Alive. I also serve as the city of Kerrville's representative on the Kerr County Animal Services Advisory Board. I'll also note that I proudly served on the Kerrville 2050 Steering Committee. Thank you, Mayor, council, and city staff for allowing me to speak tonight about animal welfare in our community, as well as update you on my involvement with the Kerr County Animal Services Advisory Board and our progress with Kerrville Pets Alive. The Kerr County Animal Services Advisory Board was formed in 2019 by Kerr County Commissioners in response to some concerns from the community about high euthanasia rates at the county shelter. The board is made up of five members, Phyllis Allen with Freeman Fritz Animal Shelter, Reagan Givens, the Director of Kerr County Animal Services, Dr. David Goodnight with Kerrville Vet Clinic, and Jonathan Letts, Kerr County Commissioner, Precinct 3. We meet quarterly at the county courthouse and we're often joined by the shelter staff, as well as members from the public, if there's a hot issue that they need to discuss. Our progress has been quite slow due to the long period between meetings and the fact that many of our action items must be approved through Commissioner's Court. The health crisis has also been a factor in our ability to prioritize items. On a positive note, we've been able to build a very strong relationship with the shelter staff and learn about shelter operations and how the shelter operates under state law. We've also started down the path of rewriting the city of Kerrville animal ordinances with the help of Kim Mizeber, who attends some of our meetings as well. We've also made suggestions for animal intake protocol at that county facility, as well as worked on fee structures at the shelter. We truly hope that 2021 finds follow-through with our action items and we see the, so we can see the fruits of our labor. Moving on to Kerrville Pets Alive, I want to point out the, you can't see the exclamation mark on my shirt and on our logo, it shows the enthusiasm for our organization. Sometimes it's a little bit misinterpreted, but it is part of our logo and we definitely mean business. Kerrville Pets Alive was also formed in 2019, following a request from Kerr County Commissioners for the formation of a nonprofit organization to assist Kerr County Animal Services in the areas of education, adoption, and funding. Kerrville Pets Alive is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. We are all volunteer and we have 10 great board members that are all very involved in our community. Our mission is to save the lives, save Kerr County pets from euthanasia with a focus on Kerr County Animal Services. With that, I would like to tell you a little bit about Kerr County Animal Services. Some of you have visited and are familiar with the operation there. Kerr County Animal Services is the only open intake taxpayer-funded animal shelter in Kerr County. The staff there services 50,000 residents and covers 1,100 square miles. The primary purpose of that facility is animal and rabies control. They not only pick up stray dogs and cats, they handle trapped wildlife, livestock, deal with animal cruelty, protective custody animals, as well as collect hogtail bounties. They're spread very thin. They have a lot to do and they're spread very thin and they operate out of a very small facility. Kerrville Pets Alive's mission is to save the cats and dogs from that facility, as well as keep them out of the shelter by educating and providing resources to the community. We have made great progress in its formation. We've had, we have a great hold in the community and we have many supporters, including many of you on council. We're proud to say that as a result of our work, there has been a substantial decline in the number of euthanases at Kerr County Animal Services. We see a very bright future ahead as we continue to grow and serve the county shelter in our community. Getting a little bit more specific about what we do, I had worked on this, I could have several pages, but I tried to make it pretty short. We provide funding for spay neuter surgeries at the county shelter, as well as we help other nonprofits with surgeries because that's a big problem in our community is spay neuter, low-cost spay neuter. We donate vaccines and healthcare items to our county shelter. They don't have that necessarily in the budget. We provide volunteer support, including rescue and transport for animals to get them saved from that facility. We supplement fees to promote adoptions. We have a great new relationship with Peterson Pet Peace of Mind, Peterson Hospice patients finding homes for those patients in hospice care. We provide pet food for area food banks. We were just at Light on the Hill yesterday, also helping with those pet owners that needed food and food for themselves. We offer financial support to area partner rescues and shelters. We service advocates in pet cruelty cases. We are fortunate to have Lucy Wilkie on our board who guides us when those cases come along. We network lost and found pets to reunite them with their owners. We have a 400-member social media group that is constantly day and night networking animals to get them back to their homes and identifying resources in the community where people need to keep their pets and they may need supplies. We work diligently with Kerr County officials for the betterment of animal services. And we hope that in November, our community decides that we need a new animal shelter facility and we hope that that comes to fruition. We also save feral cats that before had no hope of survival. A couple of years ago, every feral cat or community cat that started out as a nice, generally every cat starts out as a nice cat. Someone starts feeding them, some of them turn a little wild out of lack of socialization. All the cats at that shelter were always kept for three days and euthanized. But now we have a great program going with Austin Pets Alive, made a great partnership where those cats are safe now, would have taken to the barn cat program there, and they're vetted by Freeman Fritz before they leave. So that's a huge accomplishment. And that has resulted in a real, real substantial decline in the number of euthanases by not euthanizing those feral cats. We work with the county daily, but we really, really, really would like to work with the city of Kerrville. We believe that we could have a great partnership with the city of Kerrville and come up with some high-community, low-cost events, such as microchipping events. As you all know, Kerrville and Kerr County is growing rapidly. We have a lot of visitors to our community. We have a lot of pets that end up at the shelter, people coming through our area, and they end up at the county shelter. They don't know where the county shelter is. And some of them have a microchip and they're easily traceable back to their owner, but most of them don't. We feel like that we could partner together to produce responsible pet ownership information. Nowhere really in the county can you find literature about just responsible pet ownership, what's available, resources for pet owners. We'd like to partner with the city of Kerrville to print those materials and also have a social media internet campaign. We'd also like to partner to get information into our schools. Animal welfare really starts with the youth and there's a lot of animal welfare issues that also result in issues with people later. And we really want to get into the community. We have a great new adoption trailer and resource education trailer that we want to take to the schools and have it filled with literature, information for children. The virus has affected us a little bit with that, but we feel like that we could really partner well with you all and do great things in our community. We also have a new office, which I'm really excited about. If you haven't visited, we have a new office at 414 Clay Street, right in the heart of Kerrville. It's right behind Nobility. And the purpose of putting it there was, we wanted it to be in the middle of the community so it could serve as a resource for pet owners to come in and get pet supplies. We've had a lot of homeless people that have stopped by, living in their cars, that have come by and they've chosen to take care of their pets before themselves. So we partnered with Light on the Hill and now we have actually supplies for people and their pets. We've got little care kits for people and pets. So that office is open from 8 to 5, Monday through Friday, usually staffed and full of pet supplies. And we also offer it as a meeting place for other animal welfare groups in our community. So stop by when you can. We're real proud of it. And we wanted to start the conversation and have the community embrace animal welfare. That is all I have. Do you have any questions?
All right, council, any questions?
Thank you.
Go ahead, go ahead. No, I don't, I just said thank you.
Karen, can you explain what the euthanasia numbers were from a percentage perspective before Kerrville Pets Alive was formed and what it is now?
Kerrville Pets Alive became official about a year ago, as far as our nonprofit status, but our group of advocates have been working toward this effort for three or four years. So I would say, and I don't quote numbers specifically because that shelter is so challenged, they're challenged with software, they don't always have their statistics correct, it's no fault of their own, it's just not funded well. So in 2016, they were euthanizing hundreds and hundreds of animals. And we just got the recent report and there may be 100 animals this year that have been euthanized. So, and a lot of that has to do with the virus situation this year. They didn't take in a lot of animals, but there's been a 75% decrease in the number of animals euthanized since we got involved. We usually say live release rate, but that's not a term that everyone understands, but a huge decrease in the number of euthanases.
I've got, I've got a, oh.
Thank you.
Okay, a couple of questions. How is the rescue program, rescue adoption going? And I think you know, I've got two rescue dogs, dachshunds, one that was on the streets of St. Angelo, the other in Austin. But how's that going?
It's going great. So because of the health crisis, the shelter started limiting the number of intakes of surrendered pets. And that's when a person wants to surrender their pet to the shelter. And so the number of animals there has been a little bit lower. What the shelter learned, as we've all learned, some positive things as a result of this health crisis, is it's better to have surrender appointments where people actually have to come in, tell about their pet, and surrender the animal. And they also learned that because the county pets that leave that shelter are not spayed and neutered, when they leave, they would prefer, you said rescue, rescue groups come in and tag the animals. They're nonprofit organizations, they pull the animal from the shelter, they get them vetted and spayed and neutered. So that's going great. The problem we're having is there aren't any animals for adoption for the public because all those rescues are coming in. And is that what you were asking?
Yeah, I didn't realize that issue, yeah.
Yeah, but it's great. The numbers are really, really down right now. The interesting thing, the community has gotten involved with trying to reunite pets with their owners as well. There's just a buzz in the air about animal welfare and distant awareness and microchipping and scanning. And so a lot of our efforts because of the virus we've learned, we're helping them even before they come into the shelter. And so it's kind of going both ways right now.
My second question is, you mentioned about pet cruelty cases.
Right.
What can you do?
Not much. There's, it's all protocol, really. And it depends on if things happen in the city of Kerrville or if they happen in the county. And as you know, that can be right across the street. So what we do is when we hear about, we have all that information that's going to be on our website. But when someone calls in, they usually call Kerrville Police Department and Animal Services. Animal Services is not trained to handle the protocol involved. And so what we plan to do is meet, sit down with the police chief and the new sheriff to discuss what that protocol is for when citizens call us. I mean, they call us all the time and say, there's a dog in a hot car. But you know, the whole protocol is for that, you call Kerrville Police Department, then they have to call Animal Services. And Animal Services has no power to get the animal out of the car. So there's all these, you know, different efforts going on, but there's nothing streamlined. So our goal is to streamline that, we have a protocol with any kind of animal cruelty issues or animal concerns.
Okay, good. Any other questions?
Karen, I just want to thank you and Brenda for taking the time with me and giving me some more education. And I don't know that you'll be here through the end of the agenda, but at the end of the agenda, there are items for future agendas. And I appreciate your thoughtful ideas. And I will be asking for consensus of council to bring those forward so we can continue that discussion.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
I have one more question. Would you, as far as when you talk about partnering with the city, would you benefit more, would Kerrville Pets Alive benefit more from maybe funds for microchipping events or funds for spay neuter events? Which would benefit or be most impactful for your organization?
Definitely, if that's an option, it would be for spay neuter events, yes, absolutely. You know, microchipping is one thing where we can just put a permanent identification on an animal. But if we could spay and neuter some animals, we would save a lot of animals, for sure. So that would be amazing.
Okay.
All right, any other questions, council?
Mayor, I just want to mention that, and Brenda and I talked about this yesterday, but I guess it was maybe a year or so ago, we did talk about doing some events with what wasn't formed yet, Kerrville Pets Alive. And not very costly, but just for city residents doing events like either spay neuter or rabies, helping with the rabies shots or the microchipping. So I don't think it's going to cost a whole lot. So if that's something that y'all are interested in doing, we can just continue to pursue that with Pets Alive and then report out, you know, kind of what direction we're going.
All right, council, what's your opinion?
Good idea.
Okay, let's pursue it.
And I'd like to point out, right now in the city of Kerrville, in Kerr County, there are no, there's only one low-cost spay neuter option for residents, and it's at Freeman Fritz Animal Shelter. And the waiting time on that's usually like three months. And the, the waiting time on that's usually like three months. So if Mayor, you wanted to go have your animal fixed, you would have to wait three, three or four months to get your animal in. And they also don't do dogs that are over 60 pounds. So there's a huge need in the community for low-cost spay-neuter services.
All right, okay. Thank you. Ms. McElhanen, do we have anyone to speak to this?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. We're, we're not taking any action tonight, but thank you very much for your reporting for the obvious progress.
Thank you.
We come now to the visitor citizen forum. Any citizen with business not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the city council prior to speaking. Each speaker must fill out the speaker request form and give it to the city secretary. The speaker request form must be submitted to the city secretary before the item is called or read into record. The city council may not discuss or take any action on these items, but could look at a future agenda. Each speaker is limited to four minutes. All right, do we have any speakers signed up?
Yes, sir. We have two speakers, one that is present and one over Zoom. Ted Shulenburg.
I didn't recognize whether or not this was an agenda item because it shows as A-F, but here I am. Yesterday morning, I talked to the county about COVID-19 and its distribution plans. And I recognize that the county is charged with the distribution of shots, but they don't give the shots. And so I've come here in hopes that there might be something that the city can manage, whether by initiative or flexibility in the program or what, to institute some changes in the way that the COVID-19 is currently being planned for distribution. Last week, I submitted charts to Mayor and the four councilmen concerning the Kerr County demographics and some, and a chart that was based on Bear County data, but I thought it might be applicable because it was a large database. And one of the charts for Kerr County showed that we have a rather unique distribution of elderly. You know that, but it's about 27% of the total distribution in the county. So we're about 14,000 in the county out of 50,000 people roughly in the county who are elderly. And the other thing was that the chart, which was kind of frightening, it shows that susceptibility to dying, if you get infected, increases with age, but it increases at an alarming rate. It's exponential, such that if you're 90, as I am, you have about a seven times as many, seven chances out of as many as persons 65 that gets, gets disease. So we're really looking at two separate generations with two totally different risk categories. And because of that, I had felt that the distribution of vaccine should be more proportionate to serving the most vulnerable, that being the oldest group. The CDC had recommended two tranches, up 65 to 75, and those over 75. Governor Abbott thought that they all ought to be lumped together, old people are old people. And I'd like to think that if CDC had demographics anywhere near what Kerrville is, which was far higher percentage of elderly than nationwide or in Texas, that they might have favored three tranches, which is what I would propose if it could possibly be done. And I think three needed, 65 to 75, 75 to 85, and 85 plus. That latter group consists of about 1,400 people in this county, which would be manageable. But in addition to being the most susceptible group, which is what we're really trying to get at, they're also vulnerable because they're less well-informed and less able to react to one of these APBs, say, come in now and get your shots, sign up now, or call in now. You've seen the horror stories that go from in Bear County and all around the country, that soon as they make the announcement, the lines are flooded, some people get in and most of them don't. And the people that don't are mostly elderly people, very elderly people. Time, time's up, surely not. Does it?
Yeah. Finish, finish, if you would.
Okay. About 20, 25 years ago, I was gliding into retirement at that time. 65-year-olds were in their 40s, and that's about time the cell phone came along. They needed them, I didn't, and I figure I'm semi-typical of older people. And so we, we didn't get iPhones. I don't have them. And so we're left in the cold when it comes to one of these APBs that says, act now. So, by the way, I don't have anything against 65-year-olds. I've got three kids in their 60s, as it is right now. And I personally don't need a vaccine. I got my first shot out at the VA. But I've got a friend, companion, who's 89, she's got COPD. I figure that if she gets the virus, she probably got about one chance in four of being killed by it. And there's a lot of other people in this age group that are in similar straits. So what I'm looking for is a way for the city to find, help find a distribution system that is more equitable, that treats the most vulnerable. Right now, there aren't any plans to do it that way. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
We also have a caller on the line, and it's Jim Sandy. Mr. Sandy, are you on the line?
Good evening. My name is Jim Sandy, and my address is 3940 Oak Park Drive. And I noticed that the fiscal year 2021 budget is not compliant with the city charter. And I sent an email to the city manager bringing this to his attention. After an exchange of a couple of emails between myself and his staff, the city manager informed me that he did not agree with my assessment and that his department would not respond any further on this topic. After taking into account the information provided by his staff, I still feel strongly that the budget is in violation of the charter. I am therefore asking the city council to address my concern. I have forwarded to the city council members the relevant email exchanges on this topic. My concern with the budget is as follows. City Charter Paragraph 2.02E specifies one of the eligibility requirements for becoming a candidate for city council. In particular, it prohibits a candidate from being closely related to anyone who holds an executive position, which the charter defines as the head of any department or division within the city. The charter then states that the city manager shall indicate such positions in the budget. Through an open records request, I obtained a list of the heads of departments and divisions. In order to be compliant with the charter, the budget should indicate that all of the heads of departments and divisions are executive-level positions. Unfortunately, the budget only indicates some of these as being executive-level positions. More specifically, there are 14 heads of departments or divisions that have a pay grade of 34 or lower, and none of them are indicated as being executive positions in the budget. The budget only indicates heads of departments and divisions that have a pay grade of 35 or higher as being executive positions. The budget can be brought into compliance with the charter by adding 14 asterisks to one table. Although this is a small change to the budget, it could have a big impact in determining, determining the eligibility of a candidate for city council. Thank you for considering this.
All right. Do you have anyone else to speak?
No, sir.
Okay. With discretion, we can respond. I want to respond to the gentleman that spoke from the podium a while ago because what he is talking about is a significant major issue in our community, and that is the availability of vaccines. The Texas Department of State Health Services is in charge of that. There are 17 members on a committee that decide who gets vaccines, when they get them, et cetera. And to our understanding, that distribution has been quite unequal and random. And Kerrville is far below what it should have received, given the number of healthcare workers and the number of senior adults. And we are doing everything we can to try to address that. We had a meeting this afternoon, looking at more contact in terms of Austin and variety of other things. We are set up to do mass vaccinations, but it's a matter of just getting those vaccines. Now granted, the issue is supply. You know, there's a shortage nationally, internationally, but we want to make sure that we get what we need to care for people here. And we will follow the, the tier, the three tiers, 1A and so forth, and in, in looking at first responders, healthcare workers, and senior adults. But it's a matter of getting those vaccines. The area nursing homes have received vaccines and have done the vaccinations. And, and so anyway, I'll just say, we are doing what we can. And I am traveling to Austin tomorrow afternoon to visit the committee and the department that deals with this, to make an appeal to them for what we feel like is, is fair. So.
I'm glad to hear that. Thank you. So I'm glad to hear, hear that. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Good. Okay. All right. Then let's move on to, to the consent agenda. Consent agenda, you have a number of items that'll be considered together unless a council member or citizen asks that any of those be pulled. So counsel, you desire to pull any agenda item?
I recommend or approve, move that we approve the consent items as presented.
All right.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we've got a motion second. Any discussion?
Do we have any speakers?
We do not have any speakers.
We don't have any speakers?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. All in favor of the consent agenda, if you'll let it be known, by the raised hand? Okay. All right. Now we come to resolutions. Resolution number 072021. Ms. McElhanen, will you read that in?
Resolution number 092021, a resolution naming the public park located at 1001 Mallard Way as Granger McDonald Park.
All right.
We do have one citizen speaker signed up.
Okay, all right. Okay, Ashley Boyle, who is Director of Parks Recreation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you tonight is a naming request for the newly acquired parkland located at the landing off of Thompson Drive, one of the recent housing projects by the McDonald Companies. This development provided for the dedication of one and a half acres of parkland on Nimitz Lake to the city as new parkland. And you can see on the screen, it's the area that's highlighted in yellow, and that's a photograph of the parkland with a river view. The parkland's undeveloped at this time, but could be approved upon in the future based off direction by the community, the Parks Recreation Advisory Board, and the city council through an update of the park's master plan. The late Granger McDonald, CEO of the company, made significant contributions to the community, as you can see in your agenda packet, and specifically regarding this property, as their company funded the boating feasibility project that could be developed in the future. Because of this, staff recommends naming the park Granger McDonald Park in honor of his leadership and contributions to the community. Pursuant to the city's naming policy, there are a few steps that we have followed and we're in compliance with. The final two steps is holding the public meeting and allowing for public comment, in addition to adopting a resolution by the city council. At this time, staff recommendation is to allow for public comment and to consider adopting the resolution as presented, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Good. All right, good. Counsel, any questions?
No questions. I just think this is absolutely wonderful that we're doing this.
Good, good.
I agree.
All right. Ms. McElhanen, do we have any citizens or visitors who are going to speak to this?
Yes, sir. We have one, Justin McDonald.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I just want to say thank you for considering this in honor of my late father, and thank you to city staff for coming up with the idea to name this park in his honor. As you know, he spent so much time in this community, and his goal with our development, the landing, was to leave an indelible mark on his community. And by going forward with naming this park in his honor, you are literally helping to make that so. So I just want to say thank you on behalf of myself, on behalf of our company, and on behalf of my family. There's a couple of us here. Sorry for all the sound effects from the little one. And then the rest of our family is also watching online right now and wishes to convey their thanks as well. So thank you all very much.
Mr. McDonald, could you state your name and your address?
I apologize. You think I've done this enough times to know better. My name is Justin McDonald, 1235 Virginia.
Thank you.
All right, good, good. Thank you. Any comments? Granger was a great guy, made such a difference in this community over the years, and very much appreciated. All right, do we have a motion in regard to this item?
I move that we provide a public meeting discussion and consider approving the resolution to name the existing parkland as Granger McDonald Park.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've got a second? All right. All in favor of that motion, if you'll let it be known by the raised hand, and it's unanimous? Thank you. Okay, resolution number 202108?
Ordinance number 2021-08. An ordinance amending Chapter 66 Library of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kerrville, Texas by amending Article 2 Library Advisory Board to increase the composition of the membership of the Library Advisory Board to six members, such that city council will make four appointments containing a cumulative clause containing a savings and severability clause and providing other matters relating to the subject. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer any of your questions.
All right, okay. Ms. McElhanen is ready to answer. Any questions? Okay, do we have any speakers?
No, sir.
All right, okay. Do I hear a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2021-08 as presented.
All right, okay. Second?
I'll second.
Okay. All right, all in favor, if you'll let it be known, by the raised hand? Okay, thank you, and it passes unanimously. 7A ordinance, would you read that in for us, Ms. McElhanen?
Ordinance number 2021-01, second reading. An ordinance annexing an approximately 33.81 acre tract of land out of the Samuel Wallace survey number 113, abstract number 347, into the corporate limits of the city of Kerrville, Texas. Said tract generally located in the 3200 block of Loop 534 Veterans Highway. And there are no speakers.
There are no speakers?
No, sir.
Okay. There's no staff presentation of this because it's second reading. What is your pleasure?
I move that we approve ordinance number 2021-02 on second reading.
Second. I second.
All right. Got a motion second over here, I think, okay? Okay? All right. All in favor, if you'd let it be known by the raised hand, and it passes unanimously. Now, 7B ordinance, would you read that for us?
Ordinance number 2021-02, second reading, an ordinance vacating, abandoning, and closing a public right-of-way consisting of a portion of a sixteen-foot-wide alley which was originally located in its entirety between Francisco Lima Street and Hay Street, said portion consisting of approximately .0508 acre out of Block 48 of the Charles Schreiner Second Edition to the City of Kerrville, making a finding that the alley is not required for present or future public use, authorizing the city manager to take all necessary action to effectuate the vacation, abandonment, closure, and quit claim, and providing for a public hearing. We do have two representatives on the line if you have any questions for them.
All right. Okay. Since it's second reading, there's no staff presentation. Council, do you have any questions?
I have a question. I think I would like if someone would just clarify, I think I understand, but clarify exact, or say yes or no, the part of the alley from Francisco Lemos in a certain, I don't know just how far, but it was just basically behind the buildings that have been taken down. Will that part of the alley remain?
Yes, that part of the alley will remain, and HEB is working on their final plans for the car wash, the gas station, it'll go in that corner where those buildings came down, to actually widen that as part of one of their entrances. So the portion that'll be closed will be further in the property than that, where HEB owns both sides.
Okay. But what's already there will become basically a two-way?
Yes.
Okay. So it takes care of somebody running into each other and all those things that we dealt with before? Okay. Good. That's what I wanted to have clarified. Thank you.
And Drew, historically, part of that east, or part of that alley has already been abandoned with the HEB plat, which is why it doesn't run all the way through as it is now. So am I correct? The part that's already plotted, except for that little piece within the plat, was already vacated and abandoned prior by the city?
That is correct.
Okay. So it's a cleanup issue, more or less?
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any citizens signed up to speak?
No, sir. Not on this item.
I'm sorry?
No, sir. Not on this item.
Okay. All right. Then are we ready for a vote?
I move that we approve ordinance number 2021-02 on the second reading.
All right. Okay. We've got a second?
Yes.
Brenda, okay. All in favor, if you would please raise your hand. All right, there we go. Okay. Passes unanimously. All right. Would you read in 7C, and these will be considered as one item?
Are you ready?
Yeah.
Are you?
Right.
2018 Building and Related Codes, the following items will be presented and considered together as one item. 7C1, ordinance number 2021-03, second reading, an ordinance amending Section 26 through 32 of Chapter 26 Building and Building Regulations of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kerrville, Texas, in its entirety by adopting the International Residential Code 2018 Edition for One and Two Family Dwellings, regulating the construction, enlargement, alteration, repair, removal, demolition, conversion, occupancy, equipment, use, height, area, and maintenance of all One and Two Family dwellings and multiple single-family dwellings, townhouses within the city, adopting local amendments and renumbering Section 26-1 concerning the moving of a house upon city streets. 7C2, ordinance number 2021-04, second reading, an ordinance amending Section 26 through 31 of Chapter 26 Building and Building Regulations of the Codes of Ordinances of the City of Kerrville, Texas, in its entirety by adopting the International Building Code 2018 Edition, regulating the construction, enlargement, alteration, repair, removal, demolition, conversion, occupancy, use, height, area, and maintenance of all buildings or structures within the city except One and Two Family dwellings and multiple single-family dwellings, townhouses, and including the National Electrical Code as referenced herein, adopting local amendments and adopting a new section 26 through 38 to require a permit for the construction of a fence. 7C3, ordinance number 2021-05, second reading, adoption of an ordinance amending Articles 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6, Chapter 26 Building and Building Regulations of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kerrville, Texas, in their entirety by adopting the existing International Building Code, National Electrical Code, International Plumbing Code, International Fuel/Gas Code, International Mechanical Code, International Energy Conservation Code, and International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, 2018 Editions, and adopting local amendments to each code. 7C4, ordinance number 2021-06, second reading, an ordinance amending Chapter 50 Fire Prevention and Protection of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kerrville, Texas, by deleting Sections 50-2 and 50-3, adding a new Section 50-5, to adopt the National Fire Prevention Association 101 Life Safety Code, 2018 Edition, and adopting local amendments to said code.
You earned your pay tonight, Kelly.
Would you run that through again?
Let's roll the tape back.
Okay, council, do we have questions?
Oh, and we do have one citizen speaker. Sorry.
Okay. So this is an updating of our codes. Now, this is going to seem nitpicky, but I'm going to say it anyway. Just a couple of corrections. It doesn't affect our vote tonight. But under R105 dot 1 dot 1, that one says, fourth line, for a period not to exceed, there should be a two, one year. No, I'm sorry. That's not right. That's not right. Never mind. Never mind. Okay. Move on.
I do have just a something to say. And Drew, I don't know if you can answer this or not, but I'm stuck on the fence thing and the thirty-inch fence. And I'm just curious as to whether or not this new code matches what's in the 2018 code or whether it's more restrictive than what's in there.
The building code itself references fences above seven feet. The zoning code, the local zoning code, regulates the location and height of fences above thirty inches. So the adding that permit is to close that gap between the 2018 International Building Code and the local zoning code.
I'd like to say again, thank you to all the citizens and community members and our staff that has put in hours and hours and hours getting to this point. It's a big, big deal for the city of Kerrville, and I want to say thank you.
Yes, me too.
Thank you, Drew, and staff.
And I'll second that, or third that, thank you. You guys have done a great job, and it's about time. So this is good.
Yes, you did. Did you get your question answered?
I did.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Do we have any citizens to speak to this?
Yes, sir. Roman Garcia.
Roman Garcia, 934 Pecan Street. I am in favor of adopting the new international codes. I think it's, like I said last time, well overdue, but I do have a couple of concerns. This ordinance, specifically with ordinance 2021-04, the fencing section, that ordinance is presented in a way to bring the building regulations up to date with the latest 2020 International Building Code, as was just stated. But there are specific amendments in there that, and provisions, that I feel make building regulations more restrictive for homeowners and builders. I'd like to start with Section 05 of the International Building Code that I found. This section requires a person to obtain a permit for specific types of work, for example, building a home. And in that section, 105.2, actually exempts permit requirements, and number two on that list is for a fence that's less than seven feet high. So according to that International Building Code 2018, as far as I understand it, homeowners who want to build a privacy fence seven feet high, if that's what we're going to comply with, they don't have to get the permit. But then that goes to where the ordinance, and on page five of that ordinance, 04, you see Section 2, and there's a proposed section there that provides a more stringent provision that requires a person to obtain a permit if they want to build or make substantial repairs to a fence in any part of a fence that's more than two and a half feet high. So if adopted, a homeowner, I believe, a homeowner won't be able to build that six-feet-high privacy fence unless they get the permit. And just to add on to that, your next item, 8A, that permit fee is proposed to you to be $125. So in addition to that permit fee, the person would also, you know, need to call for inspections prior to the construction and after final construction, as was told to you by city staff, to ensure it meets all the requirements of the application. And that seems like a pretty strict procedure, just to build a fence in somebody's yard, and probably even takes up, I don't know, but probably takes up some of city staff's, more of city staff's time with the inspection and other related procedures. I'm going to go over this briefly because I'm not very sure, but on page two and three of that ordinance as well, it refers to the contractor's license requirements. In your current Code of Ordinances, there's an exception for homeowners, that they don't need to get a contractor's license. That's not actually in this ordinance as proposed to you. So my question would be, why is it not? Because that actually states that if a homeowner wants to make substantial changes or construct on their own property, that they wouldn't have to obtain that constructor's license as long as the work is performed exclusively by the homeowner and on the homeowner's dwelling. And then lastly, this ordinance is also presented as a 2050 item under the Community Neighborhood Character and Place Making Item. And I had the privilege of serving on that committee, but I don't believe that this ordinance fits with the priorities that that committee adopted or referred to council for adoption, referring to Guiding Principle C5, which states that it is to establish clear regulations in code enforcement, educate the public on the value and importance of property management, and focus on proactive enforcement and maintaining minimum property standards. I don't believe this is a minimum property standard, and it's not very common, looking at other cities that I did when I did some research, to require a permit for a homeowner to build a privacy fence. The average is probably if it was higher than six feet. So in conclusion, to finish up, the work and actions that are taken by this council should always be to benefit the citizens. And for the reasons I stated, I respectfully don't believe that these regulations benefit the people that each of you were elected to represent. And therefore, I urge you to consider this item separately from the other ones and deny the approval of ordinance 2021-04. Thank you.
Mr. Paxton?
Try to address all of those. Can you just one second here? For the homeowner, that's actually not in ordinance 2021-04. It's in 2021-03 for the International Residential Code. The homeowner is exempt from the contractor's license. That is one of the local amendments. And regarding the fence, we are looking to add a requirement again to close that gap between the zoning code and the standard international building code. So a homeowner would be required to pull a permit for building any fence over thirty inches because of the requirements in the zoning code.
Drew, just take me through that. And I know we've done it in the past, but, so, I decide I want to put up not any type of fence in my backyard over thirty inches. What do I do?
You would submit for your permit showing where the...
Okay. How do I do that? Do I have to go online?
Oh, yes. Go online through my government online.
Yep.
Fill out your permit there. That goes through a plan review, looking at the site plan, showing height and location of the fence.
So I've got to submit a plan?
Mm-hmm. Submit a plan. Goes through a plan review by different staff members, making sure that we're not violating the zoning code, making sure that the footings meet the building code, making sure we're not building over any easements or utility lines. Then they issued that permit to start construction.
Okay. And that, I've built many fences in the past and have never had to, obviously, because it wasn't part of the previous code. So I sketch something out on a legal pad, and I give you a rendering or a picture of what I think the fence is going to look like. Is that sufficient, or does it have to be an architectural drawing, or?
No, that would be sufficient so that the plan reviewers can see where we're building and what you're building.
Okay. Next question is, there is an easement. What happens then?
Then it would depend on what type of easement and whose easement, whether it's water or sewer line, making sure that those footings aren't going to impact the utility line, making sure that the utility company does have access, whether it be through a gate or removal of a section fence, should there need to be any work.
Okay.
Drew, to follow up on that, okay. So when you say closing the gap, what you're saying is that a zoning code does not match the International Building Code, and because we already have something that is in place, this is intended to make those two things compatible so that there's not a discrepancy between one and the other? Is that correct?
That is correct.
And have you experienced any situations in which not having fencing permits have come either to a situation where they're detrimental to property owners, to adjoining property owners, where they've affected where cities or other utilities may need to access utility lines underground, overhead? Is that something that happens because we don't have a regulation for that?
Yes, it has.
Okay. So in that way, in my opinion, I would say that's a representation of council acting on behalf of the citizens to make sure that we act in the safety and interest of our citizens.
Yes.
Any other questions to Mr. Paxton?
I'm concerned, from an education standpoint, people are going to keep building fences without permits.
Right.
And how do we educate them of that? Is there a grace period? Is there? I don't want to go out there and have city inspectors driving around seeing a fence going up and start fining people for something they've been doing for the last hundred years. So I'm concerned about that, and I don't know what the plan is to implement.
We intend to work through our public information office to get, you know, Facebook, social media, website, press release, try to get that information out to the public, and certainly work with any customers that are unaware of that and have started working on a fence through a normal code enforcement process.
And I'm assuming staff...
As well as contractors and Realtors Association and other trades.
And I'm hopeful that staff will be graceful in our first year or so as we implement this and educate our public. And we don't want this to be a hammer, no pun intended, but when we build a fence.
Well, in that regard, if people don't pull a permit beforehand, then they usually charge double. That's kind of our policy if you do work without a permit. So if you all wanted to do a year grace or whatever in terms of any penalties, just as a startup, I guess we could include something like that in the ordinance. Mike, you know, is that something that can be done that way?
Okay. It's a thought.
And does that go into the fee schedule, or does that go into...
Could be part of your motion here today.
Okay. So we would make that motion to waive penalties for the first year?
I think that would be a good idea.
Yes.
My question was going to be, what do we do? What do you do if you find somebody? And their answer is, I didn't know.
Right. Right. And we could actually do that on the next agenda item, where you're adopting the fee resolution.
We've got an agenda item on that, so let's tackle that.
Okay.
Okay.
You know, I think one of the most important things is what Mr. Cochran was implying to Ms. Clarkson, this can protect the neighbors and the neighborhood. Okay?
Well, I'll be honest, I probably have been possibly guilty in the past of building over an easement or under an easement, and I would be upset if Atlas Gas showed up and said, we're taking your fence down because you built it.
And they have the right to do that.
And they've got the right to do that.
Yeah.
So it works, you know, it works in both directions.
Yeah.
Don't worry. Check all my fences now, okay?
Are we ready to vote on this item? Do we have a motion?
It's a big motion.
What is the motion?
The motion is to approve ordinances number 2021-03, 2021-04, 2021-05, and 2021-06 on second reading as presented.
I'll second it.
And we're going to, to that motion, also ask staff to remove penalties for violations of the fence permitting process for the first year. Is that correct? Mike, is that, is it?
Yeah, you can do that on this item or the next item.
You can do it either one? Okay. Well, since I have it on this one, can we do it in this one? Okay. All right, then that's my motion.
All right. All in favor of this item?
I'll second that motion.
Got a second right here, all in favor. It'll be known by the raised hand, and it passes unanimously. Eight A, would you read that in, Ms. McCall?
Resolution number zero eight, 2021. A resolution amending the City of Curville fee schedule by adopting the fee to be charged with respect to an application for a fence permit. There are no speakers signed up.
All right. Well, I think we have just discussed this pretty well, but just to reiterate, so the ordinance just passed includes regulations that would, would then require a fence permit.
Pull the mic a little bit closer, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
The regulation just passed includes a fence permit that would be involved, and the proposed fee for that permit is currently a hundred and twenty-five dollars. That permit would include a plan review and at least one inspection by city staff. And Mr. McDaniel is also here to answer any questions that you may have about that fee.
So I had sent something out as a calculation after I met with several of you concerned about the fee, about, you know, where we might start, perhaps at a lower rate, and then monitor it over the next year, see what our actual costs are, how, how long is it really taking, and who's involved in that permitting. Our current estimate is maybe two to three hours, depending upon the size of the fence. Some of you, we actually discussed having a different fee for a larger fence that might require more inspection and more time. But at this point, we, we currently charge for the larger fences, over six feet, based upon square footage of the fence, times a rate in, in the fee schedule, is pretty expensive. And so this would be a flat fee for all fences of either a hundred and twenty-five or something less. And I think the number I gave you today was something like eighty dollars.
And it does include a, a plan review?
It does. Right, exactly. It's not, that would not be a separate charge as it is now. It'd be plan review and inspection.
So you're saying that if we adopt this new fee schedule, that what was previously six feet and over changes, or that, and everything is bundled into one flat fee now, or that this is only to accommodate the six feet and under?
It's the latter. Everything's under one fee. Is that not correct, Guillermo?
That is correct.
Okay, yes.
So I just want to clarify, I wasn't sure I got that. So if we adopt this new, and then all fences have the same fee?
That's correct.
No matter what the height.
That's right.
All right, what, what is the revised, the revised fee? What are we suggesting for the revised fee?
We're currently proposing a fee of a hundred and twenty-five dollars. It would be a flat fee that would include plan review and inspections, and there would not be a separate plan review fee. And that's one flat fee for all fence heights.
The flat fee of how much?
One hundred and twenty-five dollars.
It's the proposed.
It's the proposed, correct.
Probably not a fair question, but do we have any idea what we generated in fence plan fees last year?
Guillermo, take a stab at that.
I'm impressed.
Yeah.
We didn't go, we didn't go, we did not go back all the way to see what the total count was, but on average, we were charging about three hundred and twenty-one dollars per permit.
Is that one a month? Do you, I mean, I'm, I'm not holding it to-
Last year was three. I mean, so I, I couldn't tell you from here to here, there are changes, but I can go back and verify that number for you. But on average, the, the, the number is three hundred and twenty-one dollars on average that we were charging.
So the three you pulled, how far back did you go?
I believe it was last year, because when I was out, Drew was the one that actually pulled that out.
Okay, so we're not talking thousands and thousands of dollars, as far as, it's not going to make or break developmental services-
No.
-on the fee permitting. Okay, thank you.
And did that three hundred, was that both for a plan review fee and an inspection fee? Were there-
It was the, the building fee itself, and then a plan review fee as well.
There were two fees involved in that?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to see it slower. I, I would like to see it under one twenty-five. And I would propose the number we got today that, that would just minimally cover it about-
Sure. I think our figure was something like seventy-eight, so just to kind of round it, maybe seventy-five.
Seventy-five, eighty?
I'd call it eighty dollars.
I would too. I, I think that would be good.
You're for that?
Absolutely. I'll be glad to make the motion.
Then I'll entertain a motion in that regard.
On eighty, oh eight, dash two, oh, dash two, one, move that we adopt the fee schedule but amended to a, an amount of eighty dollars.
I'll second that.
All right, okay. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, it'll be known by the raised hands, and it is unanimous.
I have one clarification question on this. If, for the first year, there'll be no fees, but people still should turn in a plan. We're not doing away with that, is that?
We're just waiving the fee.
We're waiving the fee, but not the requirement, we're waiving the fee the first year, but not the requirement for-
You still have to pull a permit.
No, we're, we're waiving the penalties, the penalties if someone can, starts to construct a fence without a permit.
Yes.
So it's a penalty fee that we're waiving.
Yeah.
Just while, while the, that was my motion, was to waive that penalty that Mr. McDaniel was saying that it's a, it's double, right? The, it-
Okay.
For the penalty.
Okay, the penalty.
So the motion was only waive the penalty, not the permit fee?
Not the permit fee.
Just the penalty.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Okay, good.
That's, that was what my motion was.
Okay.
Was that clear, Shelley?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, good. Thank you.
All right. Ready to move on to the next item?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Eight B?
Development and Management Agreement between the City of Curville and the Heart of the Hills Heritage Center and the Concept Plan and Budget for the project. We do have one citizen speaker for this item.
Do we have a speaker?
We have one citizen speaker.
Okay, all right. City manager is going to address this?
Yes, sir. So it's just easier for me to do it from down here, so I can watch the slides and, and advance them. What you have up on the screen now is what you, you saw, I guess it was almost a year ago, when we first announced the project of the Heart of the Hills Heritage Center, and a partnership with them and the library to repurpose the AC Schreiner House into a, basically a heritage museum. So we had a lot of great support. We had a, a concept plan that was laid out there, which I'm going to go over with you right now. And then we set about fundraising, which I'll talk more about in just a moment. So these are just some of the site plans. It's hard to see from where you are, but this is the whole campus. So this would be part of the library campus. It's a library facility. There's another building on the other side of the library that's part of the library campus. So it's all one unit, under the oversight of the city librarian. This is, again, the other side of the library, the, the house on the other side. So this, with this, you begin to see how it lays out with the AC Schreiner House on the right, and an amphitheater that's included, tying sidewalks together, including more landscaping, reconnecting to the bridge behind the library through the campus, and back over to Clay Street to connect with the Cuts Initiative in terms of the improvements over there. A little bit closer look at that with the squares, the little squares you see here. Those, those are representations of tents or booths for the farmer's market. So this would still also be the home of the farmer's market. Just some renderings that were done of the amphitheater space. I know that you can't see all this detail, but I just want to emphasize the level of effort that's been put into this. So the board of the Heart of the Hills Heritage Center worked very hard on programming every floor of the facility and laying it all out, and what might be included. And it progresses up through the building on a timeline over the history of the city, even back to prehistoric time. So just again, second floor, and then the third floor would be primarily archives and storage space and meeting rooms and, and that sort of thing. Some more renderings as you walk into the, the lobby. And then there was a budget produced, roughly four million dollars. This would include, this is just for construction, this is, include all the improvements plus a, a maintenance reserve of four hundred thousand dollars. That's how you get up to the four, four million. And then you can see the total project budget is five million, and that includes a million dollars that's to be raised by the Heart of the Hills Heritage Center. So Martin, if we can get the second slide or presentation up there? Thank you. Okay, so some deal points on the agreement that's in front of you. Before we get into that, just to kind of lay out some milestones here about how long that we've been contemplating doing something with this building. We acquired it in 2015. There was a study done in 2015 about how it might be reused. There was a campus master plan completed in 2017. It was included in the Curville 2050 Plan as, as an anchor project for the downtown revitalization. And also, I think, in the economic development chapter for tourism. And then we executed an MOU, or Memorandum of Understanding, with the Heart of the Hills Heritage Center to repurpose the house back in 2019 with the idea of getting to the point that we are today. We did have a new concept plan completed, which I just showed you by SLS Part, SLS Partnership, which is Scott, Shel Hastings' firm, in late 2019. The public presentation went to council, as I said, about a year ago. And then we had the, the wonderful announcement of the very, very generous gift from HEB Corporate and HEB Foundation of a million dollars in late 2020, which makes this possible today to bring towards you because, or to you, because now we have city funding in place, which I'll go over in a moment. So, right here. So the costs, again, are five million. The funding sources would be the Buttholesworth memorials, two million. And that's, so that's not just the, the, the HEB, which is the next item, but these are memorials that are on hand right now with the library that have been donated over the years, that they have to use for library purposes. And this is not all of it. The number's, I think, closer to three point six or four million dollars that they have. And then the idea that we would use city hotel occupancy taxes. We've been building a pretty significant fund balance over there for some time now. This would still leave quite a bit of money left in that fund. And then the Heart of the Hills Heritage Center fundraising for the additional million to get to your five million. And this is just a recap of that. Major deal points in the agreement, it'd be a term, initial term of ten years, with renewal of up to twelve years and, and three-year increments. Termination would be for any reason, but you have to give two years' notice to either party. Rent, there would not be any rent charged to the Heritage Center. Their, their rental would basically be all the, the maintenance and furniture and equipment, personnel, and all the other programming that they would be doing for the building. They would be paying for all of that themselves. It does include the main house, but this agreement does contemplate that they may also lease portions of the grounds, as well as the carriage house or garage, by separate agreement. We just don't know what that looks like yet, but we want to move forward with this piece. So we may be back to you at some point, if they want to have an exhibit on some portion of the grounds, of some artifact or museum piece, that kind of a thing. So design and construction documents, we, oh, I'm sorry, let me back up. It also calls for you to approve the concept plan and the budget, which is also an, is part of this item, and that's why we're asking for a motion on that. It's in the agreement. So you would be approving that five million dollar budget in the concept plan that you just saw tonight. But it would not commence, no construction, no dollars spent, until HHHC, or Heart of the Hills Heritage Center, receives commitments for the required match of one million. And then we would proceed to, with construction after they do that. And they would be responsible for their improvements inside the building within nine months. So there might be displays that construction required, or moving stuff in, assembled and so forth, after we're done, within one year of them raising their one million dollars. They would be responsible for routine house maintenance and utilities, changing air filters, HVAC filters, light bulbs, janitorial, all those kinds of things, water, water bill and so forth. The maintenance of the grounds would be the responsibility of the city, unless there's a subsequent lease that sets out something differently. Major repairs to the house and systems would be the city as well. Another reason to have that, that four hundred thousand dollar reserve. The house, or, I'm sorry, hours of operation would be at least six days a week, five hours a day. This may change, subject to city approval. And then their fees also are subject to city approval for either entry or admissions or rentals. Insurance and liability, each party basically ensures what they own. So all their, their archives and displays that they own, artifacts, they have to insure that. The building that we own, we would insure that. They also would have an operating reserve equal to one year cost of their ongoing operations with a proposed budget. And then the council would have at least one member appointed to their board. So you, just like you do with Playhouse 2000, you appoint a member to them, to that board, you would do, appoint a member to this board as well. And again, this is the site plan. And then, so the actions recommended here are, again, to authorize me to execute a development and management agreement, which is substantially the same as the one before you today in your packet, and then also approve the concept plan and budget for the project. So those are the recommended actions by the staff tonight. And with that, Mara, I'll be happy to answer any questions before you have your, your speaker.
All right. Okay, questions?
Mark, they're committed quite a little bit financially here. They feel confident that they can, they can handle that.
Yes, they, they have reviewed the agreement on multiple occasions with their entire board, thanks to the good work of Bill Rector and, and that, that board. They're, they're pretty serious about this. And he's, I'm sure, going to get up in a moment and speak about that.
I have no, I have no problems with it. I think they, I think you've all done a good job.
Just clarification on the four hundred thousand reserve. That stays with the city?
Yes.
And, and to tag on, because I remember, and I appreciate you bringing that up in the beginning, with big items like the, like, you know, HVAC replacement or whatever may come up. But, but I did discuss with Mr. McDaniel that I don't believe, and we were going to look at this, that there is a mechanism that automatically renews that amount as it's paid down.
My next question.
Yeah. So I think we need to consider that as well.
And I'm not sure what that mechanism would look like, but if we, in year five, we spend a hundred thousand replacing HVAC, now it's down to three.
Yeah. Yeah, it's definitely something that I think we need to-
Is that something that we need to address now?
We can address that each year with the budget process. You know, there's a, you could use memorial funds, you could use hotel tax funds, you know, or general funds. So there's a variety of places that could come from.
So we just kind of hold off on that and look at it on an annual budget?
As a policy matter, yes, sir.
I'm good with that.
I think it's amazing that this house was given as a gift to the community. And then the follow-up gifts from the HEB Corporation, the HEB Foundation, that's amazing.
Well, the way that this community gives to the library, particularly the HEB Foundation and Company, is just marvelous. And we're such, we're so fortunate to be beneficiaries of that in so many ways. And they're just, just terrific corporate citizens.
Yeah. And just to jump onto that, I mean, when you look at, at the budget that's being proposed, it doesn't include any money from sales tax, it doesn't- proposed, it doesn't include any money from sales tax, it doesn't include any money from property tax. It's coming from people who wanted to leave money to our library, from very generous foundations, from a partner, from people that come and, and have heads and beds in our community. And I just think that, that that's worth repeating over and over again, that we're able to do this with so much generosity and, and not to strap that onto the backs of, of our citizens and, and their taxes. I'm excited. I'm real excited about this project.
And I think the committee, for their ambitiousness as they look ahead to this, should be commended. This is.
We need this.
Going to be a great project.
Okay. Ms. McLennan, do we have citizens or visitors sat up to speak?
Yes, sir. William Rector.
Honorable counsel, honorable mayor, thank you for the opportunity to speak. It has been a pleasure, excuse me, William Rector, Chairman of the Board, Heart of the Hills Heritage Center, 705 Washington Street. Thank you. It has been a pleasure working with city staff, working on this document and putting it together. We spent many hours together, but it has been a pleasure presenting you the document that you have before you. We have two of our board members here tonight, Linda and, and Tony and Charlie, three of our board members back here. And I have to tell you that Linda and Tony were the two that did the walkthrough on the museum. They've done a tremendous amount of work on the diagrams and the drawings that Mr. McDaniel presented. We have 12 grants that are, have been submitted or are ready to be submitted to fill our part of this, this agreement. We look forward to working with the city. We look forward to this, bringing a wonderful, high-quality museum to this community and we strongly recommend to you this document that we in the city have worked on. Thank you.
And speaking of, speaking of the document, as I started going through it, I had, I had question after question after question, but by the time I got to the end of the document, all of my questions had been answered. So, I think that speaks to the thoughtfulness and preparation that was put into that. So, I thank you, everyone that worked on that, as well as the planning of, of what we'll see come to fruition before hopefully too long.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Do we have any other speakers?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. What is the pleasure of a council?
I make a motion that we authorize the city manager to execute a development and management agreement between the City of Curville and the Heart of the Hills Heritage Center and approve the concept plan and budget for the project.
A second.
All right, we've got a motion, a second. All in favor, if you would, let it be known by the raised hand. All right, and it passes unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, if I could take a little moment here to also thank Mike Hayes for all his work on getting the document done. We went through multiple versions of this to get to.
That document was great. I mean, it really was very complete.
It is very good.
So, thank you.
Good work.
Hey, Mike, will you sign my copy?
Yes, I will. I think it's already signed.
All right. Okay. 8C, Ms. McLennan?
Purchase of a 2021 Ford Transit van in the amount of $94,207.60 from Ken Stople Ford, Waldock, and Quicksigns to be used as a neighborhood enhancement vehicle to include library services. And there are no citizen speakers signed up.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tonight, I'm going to be proposing to you the purchase of a 2021 Ford Transit van to be used as a neighborhood enhancement vehicle. As a bit of a refresher, the Neighborhood Enhancement Team was created back in September. The purpose of the Neighborhood Enhancement Team is to enhance the quality of life for Curville residents, one neighborhood at a time, through delivering services and programs provided by the city and others. The goals originally set out by the Neighborhood Enhancement Team was to work to strengthen neighborhoods, to raise awareness of some of the code and zoning ordinances, to provide information on accessing city services, and to help promote a clean and safe environment. This is in alignment with our Curville 2050 Plan. It was priority Area C, which is community and neighborhood character and placemaking. The guiding principle is to kind of help celebrate and honor the character of each neighborhood, to revitalize the neighborhoods and actually to create gathering spaces within those neighborhoods. Our action item for that is to create neighborhood area plans appropriate to the uniqueness of each part of our city. With those objectives in mind, the library wants to be able to provide basically a library on wheels. So, the neighborhood enhancement vehicle would help us do outreach, do library card signups at schools and community events, do homebound delivery of books and materials, which is something that we're looking at starting, starting now, providing services and programs within the neighborhood, help out at special events, support other departments such as the code and zoning ordinances with Donna at Code Enforcement, and to just help provide basic information on what services and what things the city can provide to the neighborhood residents in their neighborhood. So, the Neighborhood Enhancement Vehicle features, it's, it's really a decked-out Ford Transit van. It's got a generator, 43-inch TV that we can use for programming. It'll be Wi-Fi enabled, so we'll be able to do programs in different computer things out there, sign people up for library cards. It has a fold-down countertop. It's got a ramp off the back of the van. It has shelving, so we can take books out, use it as a bookmobile, and it also has an exterior chalkboard, so that when we do kids' events and different events like that, they can write actually on the van. These are some of the renderings that we've had drawn up. This is the wrap that would be put out by Quicksigns. So, the front, the rear of the van will have the actual cantilevered ramp on the back of it. This is the driver's side, and this is it with the fold-down countertop and the awning.
Cool.
Yeah, it's really cool. This is your passenger's side. They'll have a sliding door on that side, so we'll be able to access from there. And then these are the interior renderings. So, we'll have shelf space, we'll have outlets, we'll have countertop space, storage space. So, we really are a library on wheels. We can do everything that we could do inside the library in this van. So, the costs that we're looking at, we did work with a number of vendors. We got the best deal with Ken Stople Ford for the actual purchase of the 2021 van. The conversion will be done by Waldock, and that's 53,000. And then Quicksigns here has designed the wrap and they'll do the whole design and the wrapping of it for 2,700. So, the total cost is 94,000 for the van. The Friends of the Library, I had talked to them about this project, and they approved a donation of $60,000 towards the cost of the vehicle. The remainder of it will be purchased from our library memorial fund for 34,000. The implementation time is going to take about eight months. There isn't any vans in stock, so that actually has to be built. And then it'll take a couple of months for them to actually do the conversion on it before it arrives back in Curville for the wrap. The staff recommendation is to approve the purchase of the Ford 2021 Transit van for our use as a neighborhood enhancement vehicle. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have on this project.
Just to be clear, when you say support code enforcement by raising awareness of code and zoning ordinances, there's, there in no way is going to be any sightings or fines coming from that vehicle, correct?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. Information purposes.
Good questions. And how are you going to budget for the ongoing expenses, gas and just general maintenance?
Just general fund. We have a city vehicle right now and we build that into our budget every year, and that will also just take over with the, the Neighborhood Enhancement Vehicle as well, the gas and all of the regular maintenance.
You know, there are so many stories about, I know this is not just for children and youth, but so many stories of children and youth, they got, get introduced to books, to reading in this kind of, you know, vehicle. And I think it's a lot of possibilities. I will say, when I look at that wrap sign, you could do maybe a kind of a NASCAR look with all those stickers.
Racing stripes on it.
Yeah, yeah, right.
I would let other people be in charge of that bill.
It really does help us build relationships outside of the library. We have great relationships, obviously, with our patrons that come into the library, but a lot of people don't know what we can do and what services we offer, and it really provides us a great way to be able to go out and introduce that lifelong love of reading and the lifelong love of library and what that can bring into your life. So, we're very excited to be able to go out and kind of bring them, you know, the, the services of the library to people in their own neighborhoods. There's a certain comfort in that, I think, when people, you come into their neighborhoods and you can show them, hey, look at everything the library's got to offer. We have programs and we have educational programs and cultural programs and recreational programs. It's not just books. And to meet people where they are, I think, is very important in today's society. That's, that's how we live now.
How long do you, would it be to go from, I mean, you've got a lot of miles to cover. So, how, from one neighborhood till the next time that you would be back in that neighborhood? What's the timeframe?
We're kind of going to try to coordinate. We, we are starting to offer homebound delivery services in February with our regular city vehicle. And as the programs grow, what we want to do is be able to kind of steal a little bit from the streets department and how they did quadrants. So, we're kind of looking at maybe doing one quadrant one week where we do programs and book delivery and things of that nature, and then maybe moving on to a next. That's kind of what we've laid out tentatively with our home delivery project right now. And then we also want to be able to work, I've talked to people at the Doyle Center, I've also talked to Waverly Jones at Dieter about different pop-up events. We're also talking to some of the assisted living homes and care homes where we could get on a schedule with them to maybe do a book club for them or deliver books there as well. So, it's, it's still got, yes, definitely a ways to go in terms of planning and logistics, but we kind of have a basic scoped out in our mind right now.
You could be a 24/7 service.
We could.
And you stay busy all the time.
We could.
I just, I want to commend the Friends of the Library. I just, I think that's fantastic that they are putting in 60,000. That's, that's great, and thank you to all of them. Great, great thing.
Any other questions, council? Do we have any invited to speak to this?
No, sir.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a motion? And the reason I want to make the motion is because I showed it to my children, and not only does the city staff prove this, want us to approve this action item, my kids do too. So, can, can I make the motion that we approve the purchase of a 2021 Ford Transit van to be used as a neighborhood enhancement vehicle?
Yes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we've got a second. Before we vote, let me just say this. I know we cannot always do this with specialty vehicles, but I'm glad this is coming from Ken Stople Ford, from a local dealer. Yeah. All right, all in favor, let it be known by the raised hand. All right, and it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, 8C?
D.
Well, 8D.
8D, professional service agreement with Fries &amp; Nichols Inc. to update the City of Curville Water and Wastewater Master Plan. And there are no citizen speakers.
Okay. Stuart Barrett?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to present the Water/Wastewater Master Plan update, as we talked about last week in our, in our workshop. This is the agenda item that we promised you then that we would be bringing back this week for consideration and, and funding. So, if you have any questions about it, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yes. We had the 100-year water plan and now this plan. There are differences?
Yes, sir. So, the 100-year water plan is a raw water source plan. It's where we're trying to find new water available to the city. This particular plan is building infrastructure within the city. It's more pipes and tanks and things of that nature, actually physical components that we'll be building. We also use it for new subdivisions that are coming to town when they want to tie on our system and make sure we have system capacity. And where they're tying on is actually going to be functional for that subdivision, both water and wastewater.
Okay, all right.
And I think it's important to note that this is not a study on how to turn wastewater into potable water. This is, has nothing whatsoever to do with that.
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Mr. Barrett, I just want to clarify that this, this has been planned. We have this budgeted.
Yes, ma'am.
It's not something that's new coming for us. It was in our budget for this year and we have planned for this.
We try to update this every three to five years, depending on how much growth we're seeing. So, yes, it's in our normal routine. Yes, sir.
Any other questions, council? Do we have any speakers?
No, sir.
All right. Do I hear a motion on this matter?
I authorize the city manager to finalize and execute a professional service agreement with Fries &amp; Nichols to update the City of Curville Water and Wastewater Master Plan.
I'll second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Cochran? Okay. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand, and it is unanimous. Okay. All right. 8E?
Agenda, distribution, timeframes, and city council regular meeting date and time.
All right. Mr. Cochran, Ms. Clarkson, would you like to comment on this?
So, Mayor, what happened to me, I'll speak to myself, two weeks ago was, was, I was presented with a lot of information and it was a atypical weekend where it was 8 o'clock on, on Sunday night before I was able to open the agenda. And I was very overwhelmed by what I saw when I, when I looked at the agenda. And I have felt that way more than once, that, at times, that, that I haven't had enough time to prepare. I've, I've talked, you know, I've, I've had to come to the idea, is this me or, you know, in my, and where I am in my life, or maybe am I not alone in feeling this way? So, I've kind of talked with, a little bit with Mr. Hayes and Mr. McDaniel just about different ideas that maybe we can talk about tonight. And if the council doesn't want to change anything with the way we're doing things now, I, I'm fine with that too. One of the items we talked about was, you know, Mr. Hayes brought up that if we have documents over a certain length of pages, or maybe it was, maybe it was you, Mark, over a certain length that we, we have an extra week to two weeks, that we just have more of a protocol in place when we're going to be faced with big agenda items and have a longer length of time. We're suggested getting the agendas out earlier. However, I don't want to put that burden back on staff. Personally, I like getting the agendas on Friday on a normal weekend, which sometimes we have in our family. I can look through all or most of that over the weekend. So, another consideration was, do you want maybe to, to get the agendas on a Friday, go ahead and have our scheduled meetings on a Monday, but hold council on Thursdays or actually move the time? So, there's a lot of things that we can consider, talk about, or if all of you are feeling like everything we're doing right now is, is fine as is, then, then I'll go with that as well. So, that's kind of where I.
My comment's very similar, just over my time period. I've, there are times that if I'm traveling on the weekend, by the time I get back on Sunday and access it, I don't have a whole lot of time, I've got Monday, basically, to get with staff, get questions answered, go through the documentation. Again, it's not a priority item for me. To me, it's more of a, I think we can do a better job. I could do a better job if I had a few more days to process and get questions answered. So, I think it's more of just a discussion point, would the council like to, and I think the public needs to have some input into it, of whether we want to consider moving it to possibly Thursday, regular scheduled city council meetings to Thursday. The agenda would still come out on Friday. We could still have our meetings with the city manager on Mondays and Tuesdays as needed, but it gives them more time if we have questions. It gives us time to amend the agenda if we need to, because we still. It gives us time to amend the agenda if we need to, because we still have the 72-hour window to do that. So to me, it's, it's just a, I don't want to even call it convenience. I think it's, it's expediting the, the ability of us to do our job. But it's just a discussion point. I'm not, we're, there's no motion to be made tonight.
One thing I had thought about in that regard is if there are documents ready that can be emailed to us, even though we do get printed copy on, whenever we get the agenda book, we would have had some, some documents we could already go through before getting the agenda book. But it seems like to me we're looking at several different ideas and I'm trying to figure out where we go from this point to come back and say, okay, here's, here's what we need to do. Here's what's possible.
Maybe the thing to do is, y'all think about it, the ideas that have been proposed. And then when we have our next regular meeting, you can share your thoughts and we can have it up for another discussion item.
Is there any, anything that, that I brought up that, um, that maybe I, or I should say that I didn't bring up that would maybe be a consideration? The, the one being keeping the Friday original posting, moving the meetings to Thursday. Another being designate a length of document and based on a certain standard of, of page numbers or what have you that, that we require to review that document for more time? Any combination there? Are there other items that we could consider that you've seen done? Or, or is that kind of our basic?
That's it.
Okay.
All right. Let me ask you, is this the way to go? If you got ideas on this, send it to the city manager and then we'll figure out how we process that in a workshop or something else. Is that all right? Okay. All right, good. Okay. Next agenda item, 8F?
City's ongoing preparedness in response to COVID-19 coronavirus.
Correct. Chief McElhaney, yeah, McElhaney, if you, McEl, sorry. McElhaney, if you, if you give us that, that word.
Good evening.
Maloney, I'm sorry. I should just say chief.
Yes.
Got it, sir.
Yeah, all right, okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Give you a brief update on the COVID-19. Talk a little bit about some of the numbers for Kirk County. There we go. So currently, as of today, at four o'clock, we got down under 300, got to 290 active. Tragically, there are 68 deaths within the county. 3,300 are recovered and currently 26 hospitalized. The hospitalized numbers has been as high as 34 and as low as 18. The next slide kind of brings it together. I think it's kind of interesting that on January 4th, we were below 300 at 255. The entire month of January, we stayed in the 300s, peaking almost to 498 with the active cases. And as of today, got back down under 300 at 290. You can see that 14 gate, or that gap there from when the numbers jumped to where they're starting to get the recovery after that 10 full days. Local update, so the public COVID testing will be at the Hill Country Youth Event Center. That will be next Monday, the first, through Friday, the fifth, from eight to four. This is a drive-through only and there is no appointment necessary. If you remember, this has changed for the state of Texas and now they provide this through Spartan Medical. It's not a one-day site, it's a multiple-day site out there, but it is free to the public. Meetings that we've been working on, Mayor talked briefly on those. The community leadership meeting, we met last Thursday, the 21st. We have another meeting scheduled for next Thursday, February 4th. Vaccine Task Force met on Thursday, the 24th. And our next meeting is Monday, February 1st. And today, we had an emergency vaccine meeting, talking about the allocation and trying to work toward that for Kirk County, and that was today on the 26th. COVID Task Force update, one of our goals, as mentioned before, was implement the county vaccination plan. Kind of focused on that, that Phase 1A tiers is that healthcare workers. And Kerrville is a little unique with the number of healthcare workers, at 3,400 healthcare workers. So we're still working toward that, but we still have a ways to go in regards to the number of vaccines for our healthcare workers. Phase 1B tiers is the high-risk and frontline workers. And in that category is there are 14,000 residents that are over 65. This is provided by the Department of State Health Services on their tiers and their phases for the vaccination. We did establish a call center for frequently asked questions and information. That was stood up last Friday and that is stood up by the county at the, and going well at this point to provide some information to the public. And we designed a community vaccination clinic, so we are set up at 100, everything but the vaccine. So the, the throughput is there. We have all the signs set up that we've been working on since 2011 with the flu clinic. We have our seats there, we have everything ready to go. Personnel on standby, all we need is the vaccine at this point. Key stakeholders working on the task force are City of Kerrville, Kirk County Emergency Management, Peterson Health, and HEB. So the reminders for the public and is the COVID-19 is still a public health threat. So encourage everyone, please get education on the vaccine from reliable sites. The vaccine will become available. When it does, make sure you can make that educated decision on what's best for you and your family. Department of State Health Services provides that. The Food and Drug Administration and the CDC also has information on those. As always, remain vigilant and don't become complacent. It has been a long road with the COVID-19. Continue to wear a mask to reduce the spread of the virus. Continue to recommend social distancing, stay home if you're sick, and be patient and kind. Questions?
All right, Council, any questions?
Yes. I had had some information today from an organization wanting volunteers to help man the food, the food bank, the, the phone bank. And it was had, it also said that, that there was a phone number in place already. Is, is there?
In regards to where to volunteer?
No, it, no, not to volunteer, but to call in and make a reservation.
There is not. So reservations. Correct. So reservations will not become available until we actually receive the vaccine, very similar to other counties. So if we, when we receive a thousand vaccines, there will be a thousand slots available at that time. That will, that will fill quickly.
What, what about to call into the phone bank?
So calling to the phone bank is available, so that started up last Friday. That is not a pre-registration for the vaccine. That is just a, a means for citizens to get information about the vaccine, get information about the testing, more in regards to COVID, to take some of the pressure off Peterson and the other agencies here in town.
So that's what they meant. So there's two numbers. There's a call-in for information number and then later there will be a call-in to make a reservation.
Correct. So the vaccine will come later, so that will both be online and a call-in number, correct.
Would you give us that number for, for, you know, just a call now to the phone bank and get information?
I do not have that available.
Okay.
But I'll get it.
Yeah, okay.
If, yes, if, if you could get that to us so that we could disperse that, that would be good. And where, where will the vaccine clinic, will there be? I'm not quite sure if there'll be some at, at the pharmacies and other places, but where will one be set up? Did I miss that?
So currently, we're working with one of our local churches to set up the vaccine site where we currently have the footprint and everything there. And that will be the larger one, that will be in coordination with Peterson Health and HEB for that. There will still be some availability, maybe through the pharmacy or other private physicians. And that, I'm not 100% as who receives those.
Okay.
And we'll get that information out ahead of time to the public. Typically, what we're seeing is, actually, it's getting a little faster. They're making notification of who receives the allocation on Saturday. And so still a couple of days till you actually receive it. So we'll get that information out early enough so we can get the registration and people can get coordinated for that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Council?
I just want to recognize the, the citizen speaker from earlier. And I, I completely understand the frustration. I don't think that's unique probably to yourself or anyone here. Is there anything else you would add to that? I mean, I have no idea why we're not getting the vaccines. It seems like we have the population of healthcare workers. It seems like we have the population of elderly where we would be a high priority consideration. But I don't think there are any answers. Do you, do you, is there anything else that you can say that, that might explain any of this?
We met today, that was when we called together a meeting after understanding that we didn't receive any allocation on Saturday. So we wanted to get together and come together with a plan of what we need to do. The next allocation will be determined by that expert panel on Thursday. And so we're trying to do everything we can to knock on those doors, to make sure that they understand our needs here in Kerrville and Kirk County. And they recognize what we see, the 3,400 healthcare workers, the over 14,000 people over 65, that, that we need to get the vaccine here. And we're ready.
Right. Thank you for doing that. Because it was my understanding that we were anticipating 2,000, right? And then we, and then we didn't get any allocation?
We, we have not received any, correct. They continue to ask. I think the 2,000, I believe Peterson continues to request the 2,000 doses for that and we have not received.
Well, I just want to thank everybody. I know that, that the frustration that, that our citizens, some of our citizens feel is shared by all of us. Wish that we could do more, wish that we had more control over the situation. Appreciate all of everyone's efforts to do the best we can for our community. So thank you.
Hope to stand back up here in two weeks and tell you how many we vaccinated.
And Chief, I keep hearing about the fact that we're not a hub and other places are, and that's why they're receiving more doses than we are. Can you clarify some of that for me?
Unfortunately, I can't. So in regards to the vaccination hub, they did set up some initially through some of the public health. Since that, they expanded, I believe it was to 79 vaccination hubs in Texas. We have applied to be a vaccination hub here. They did accept our, they have received our application, we know that. We have not gotten any notification back that we're a vaccination hub. But that still doesn't change the, the smaller providers that could still receive the 100 doses, the pharmacies, the other ones there.
Have all of the nursing homes received vaccine? They have not, have they?
So the nursing homes are under a federal contract with CVS and Walgreens. If they opted in, so that's all being managed through the Health and Human Services Commission. And so they are providing that or scheduling that. My understanding is that they were working to get the nursing homes or those long-term care facilities taken care of by the end of January. And I believe there was about 1,100 residents that were, that fell into that category. I, I know some have, just that we see from social media.
I'm sorry. One thing to his, his question. My understanding is that the, the state set up the hubs in metropolitan areas. And then they decided to set up some hubs in the rural, semi-rural area. Well, we had gotten some vaccines. And then they, as I understand it, designated French Gillespie County Memorial Hospital as a hub, but not us. And it, so the, the game changed and there wasn't even the, the understanding that we were supposed to apply to be a hub.
Right.
I mean, it just, the directions weren't there. So, you know, it's, like I say, it's been unequal and random and, and compounded by the fact of a lack of, of supplies.
All right, questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Maloney. All right. Any, any comments, citizens?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. And let's move to the next item.
Declaration of local state of disaster due to a public health emergency, March 20th, 2020.
All right. Any questions, Council, on this matter of a state declaration of disaster?
It's all just as it needs to be, isn't it?
It, it, yeah, it continues and it gives us some benefits to have that at this point. Yeah.
Yeah, I'd ask that we address that on a periodic basis, just to let the public know that we are not taking it for granted. We know that there is an emergency action disaster, dare, declaration. We're aware of it and we want, you know, we're going to at least acknowledge it on a routine basis.
Yeah.
At one point, we did amend it because we had made some changes, so it's good to keep.
Okay, 9A?
Financial update for the month ended December 31st, 2020.
All right, Ms. Dozier?
All right, good evening. We're almost at the end of a long agenda. And I want to give you a brief financial update. Because of the holidays, I feel like I haven't talked to you about this much lately. So this is a financial update through the end of December. We're going to start with the general fund. You'll remember that the general fund is our largest fund and that's our main operating fund with public safety, parks, streets, those kind of departments. And a reminder with how these reports work. So when you're looking at these columns here, the one in the middle shows our actuals that we'll be talking about. The one over on the far left shows the total budget for the year. You'll notice that the net there is a negative 365,000. We did pass a balanced budget. And then after that balanced budget was, was passed, there was a budget amendment passed. And that's because we had extra money left over at the end of the 2020 fiscal year. Things were better than expected and council approved reinstating step plans for public safety and also a 2% discretionary payment to general government employees. So that's, that's why you'll see that negative there. So looking at actuals year-to-date, we've had revenue of 7.7 million compared to expenditures of 7.2, leaving us with a net of 500,000. And I'll go through a little bit more detail on the revenue side. You'll see that we're a little bit lower than previous year and also a little bit lower than budget. Let me give you a little, some more explanation there. So property tax is our largest revenue source. And property taxes are due at the end of January. December and January are our two largest months for property tax collection. And when you look at the numbers compared to the last year, it looks like we're way behind on property tax collections and that could be concerning. I can tell you I'm not real concerned about it because the majority of it seems to be just a timing difference between this year and last year. The way our property tax is collected by the Kirk County Tax Assessor, Bob Reeves, and his office receives large electronic payment files from mortgage companies. There was one large file in particular that they received the last week of December last year, but the first week of January this year. So I can tell you that the first week of January in 2021, we had 998,000 more in collections than that same week in the prior year. So we're looking okay. But in general, there has been a trend towards more January payments rather than December payments. And we can see that that really started with the tax changes a couple of years ago that led fewer people to itemize their deductions. So more people are taking the standard deduction and then waiting until closer to the deadline to pay that property tax is what it appears is happening. Sales tax just continues to be a good news story. We are continuing to see the same trends that we've seen for multiple months now. Strong performance and led especially by retail, which is our largest category. In particular, regional retail, some of the big stores that people from a large geographic area come to Kerrville to shop at, especially home improvement stores. We've also seen a big increase in our online sales tax revenue from multiple online sales tax vendors. And then manufacturing also continues very strong. So you might remember that we budgeted a 6% decrease in sales tax revenue. And we budgeted that based on potential impacts from COVID on our sales tax and on the economy in general. But what we've seen so far, December was 8% higher than the same period in the prior year. And then just a sneak peek at January, January 14% higher than January of last year. So just continued outstanding results on sales tax. And you'll remember that sales tax is two months in arrears. So February is usually our So February is usually our largest sales tax month, because it represents sales that actually occurred in December. So we'll be able to update you soon on our February numbers, but that's usually our largest sales tax month. Wanted to mention a few other things on some other revenue categories that we've had updates about as we ended 2020. So in particular, Kerrville-Shrinor Park, revenue up $50,000 compared to the same period in the previous year. It's just incredible. They've seen increases in all categories, especially RVsides, mini cabins, day passes, and I've talked to our Parks and Recreation Director, Ashley Boyle, about this, and she, she notes a COVID boost that they're really seeing. The Kerrville-Shrinor Park really offers the perfect kind of recreation to be socially distanced and outside, and individual cabins, individual tents, RVs, that kind of thing. They've also really increased their marketing efforts, social media, print, new logos, branding. They also have really worked to improve the park condition out there with landscaping projects, and just excellent customer service by those employees out there, so they're just doing a great job. Municipal court is one that does continue to still be down some, so this is one that we continue to watch, but down $7,000 compared to the prior year, and our budget was for them to be up some compared to the prior year. EMS, EMS is also one that surprisingly, we've had a lot of impact to related to COVID. So we're still seeing EMS revenues down compared to the prior year. And it looks like, you know, it's just volume-driven, so billable incidents are down, especially non-emergency transports, as it looks like people try to avoid the hospitals unless it's really absolutely necessary. And we've also seen a significant decrease in our mileage revenue. EMS gets paid by the mile, and especially when they're transporting people to San Antonio, those are a big portion of our EMS fees. And those out-of-town transports are down significantly. I've talked to Chief Maloney about that, not exactly sure if it's because of hospitals being full in San Antonio, or just less things that would normally be transported to San Antonio happening, but we're seeing decreases there. Let's see.
Amy, on the, on the EMS, we budgeted less than we budgeted year before, or where are we compared to budget on?
So for EMS, we budgeted pretty much flat. Yeah, so we're, we're a little low compared to our budget on the EMS side. And you'll notice back on our original page, on the revenues, you can see that our other revenue category is less than prior year, but we're doing okay compared to budget. But that EMS and the parks revenue, the municipal court revenue, that kind of thing are all in that other revenue category. We are down from prior year. Several things there are timing issues, though, with, with some, a K-Pub payment and a KISD payment that happened in a different month than the prior year, but we will receive this year. And then one other revenue to note is interest revenue continues to be significantly down as interest rates are down significantly compared to the same time last year. Looking at general fund expenditures, you'll see that they're a little bit higher than the prior year, and real close to budget. It makes sense that we'd be higher because of that 2% one-time payment to employees. We also have had more street maintenance in the first few months of this year than we had in the prior year, and specifically a slurry seal contract that council had approved. But the departments continue to monitor their spending and stay on track with their budget. Moving on to the water fund, that's our second-largest fund, and this is the fund that records revenue for water and sewer sales. Revenues of 3.5 million compared to expenditures of 3.1 million for a net of 410,000. Looking at the revenue side, we're actually better than budget and better than prior year. Water revenues are notoriously hard to predict because they're so weather-dependent, but we have seen an increase specifically in residential consumption compared to both prior year and compared to what, what we were expecting. And we did have a fairly dry fall, and it was more dry than in the previous year, so it appears to be irrigation-related on the residential side that's driving that. On the water fund expenditures side, you'll see that expenditures are lower than prior year, also lower than budget. Lower than prior year, a couple of those reasons are because we have lower transfers, lower transfers out for debt service. We've re, we've done some debt refundings that have lowered some of our debt service, and also just the place that we are in the amortization schedules with debt service is a little bit lower right now, so reduced transfer there. And the water fund reimburses some costs to the general fund for administrative services. The general fund has a lower budget this year, so we have lower expenses to reimburse, and that's lowered that transfer. And then just looking at the current year, supplies and maintenance trending a little less than budget, but those are one of those things that it's very hard to predict which month, you know, a big repair is going to occur in, so I think it's more a timing difference than anything there. Looking at some of our other larger funds, I'll go into a little bit more detail on the next bullet point slides, but the Development Services Fund, they have revenue of 177,000 compared to expenditures of 245,000. So in the red there, about 68,000. The golf fund, look at the golf fund, I'm super impressive. Golf fund has revenue of 241,000 compared to expenditures of 214,000. I'll talk about that a little more on the next slide. And then the Hotel Occupancy Fund is the last one, we've talked about that some with relation to the Heart of the Hills Heritage Center. But they're actually above the same time last year on the revenues, and so this is revenue earned at hotels with out-of-town guests, so that's just barely above, but it is above, so that's a real good sign. So a few things on these other funds. Development Services, those revenues are lower, but you'll remember this time last year, we had a lot of new projects going through our Development Services Department, HEB, KISD, the landing, Arcadia, all that kind of stuff, so we don't have as many large projects going on right now. The golf fund, once again, I went to our Director of Parks and Recreation to ask her, you know, what's driving these increases in the golf fund. She attributes a COVID boost there as well. It's a good activity to be outside and socially distanced. You'll remember that there are some slight fee increases on the golf fund this year, it's like $1 and $2, but that's, that's contributing as well. The new golf carts are apparently a big hit, I don't know if anyone has used them yet, but I understand that the customers really like them. And then Parks and Recreation Department has taken over the marketing for the golf course, and they've really increased marketing, same kind of things that I explained on Kerrville-Shrinor Park. And then I understand that the course is just in really excellent condition right now, and especially for this time of the year, so it sounds like they are really just doing a great job keeping that course in excellent condition, and people want to play. Then Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund, we just talked about those revenues being up. When we look at the revenues by actual individual property, what we're seeing is that the properties that offer individual cabins, standalone units, short-term rentals, that's where we're seeing increases. It's not across the board at every property, but those particular property types seem to be attracting the most business right now, which makes sense. Then I wanted to just throw in a couple more metrics for y'all, real estate metrics. I'm not a real estate professional like some of you are, but to me, this looks like a seller's market. Our active residential listings in December of this year compared to last year, same time, down 49%, but sales are going up, and the dollar volume of those sales are going up, so fewer listings and higher sales, interesting statistics there. And then the last thing I wanted to end with is just looking at unemployment rate, this is the Kerr County unemployment rate. In general, you know, we've fared really well through this whole COVID pandemic, but it is important to note that our unemployment rate in Kerr County, while lower than Texas and lower than the United States, is still at double what it was at this time last year. So there certainly are members of the community that, that are impacted significantly. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Good information. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you.
A lot of good news in there.
Yes, there is.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Counsel, items for future agendas.
I was wondering, are we due for Gil to come back and update us?
I think that's going to be in March. He was going to do it at a workshop, we canceled the workshop because of COVID and because we didn't have this space. So I think we provided something in writing, I believe, because we did that report as well as the CIP report and the process improvement report all at the same time, and we just canceled them because we canceled the workshop. So in March, we have it scheduled again.
That's good.
I had lunch with Gil, Selena's today, and there's some good things developing, continue to develop in economic development. All right. Okay. We have no need for executive session, I don't think, okay? All right, bear with me just a minute, I'm going to tell a quick story related to the Butt family in this community. You know, Mrs. Howard Butt was Mary Elizabeth Holsworth Butt, and that's who the library is named for. I did her eulogy at her funeral in 1993 in Corpus. A quick story I told. In the 1950s, she was appointed by the governor to go on the MHMR board in Austin, first woman on that board. She went to her first meeting, they went all through everything, and then said, "Anything else?" And she said, "I have one thing. Before getting, coming on this board, I went to every state hospital and every state school in the state, and I have a concern that we are serving our clients, patients, out of a, their meals out of a big aluminum bowl with a big aluminum spoon." And she said, "I think that's demeaning." Well, the men on the board didn't do anything with that. So come back, next board meeting is right before Christmas. End of the board, end of the board meeting, she says, "I have a gift for, for everybody." And gives them each a gift and asks them to open it up. It's a big aluminum bowl and a big aluminum spoon. And it seemed to convey something. Before long, they started serving the folks at state hospitals and state school better. So anyway, family story. All right. We are adjourned.